Well, should we get started with the mayor tonight? Okay. Good evening, this is Katie Ketchman. It is Wednesday, May 18th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. And I call the council workshop to order. Tonight, we're going to talk about the capital facilities plan that was created by Rock Creek Project Management for the city. And let's start with the roll call. Obi? Ellis?
Yes.
Grant?
Here.
Dakin?
Yeah.
Ketchman? Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey? Morrison? Here. Bertini? Here. Ross?
Here.
Shaw? Here. Taylor?
Here.
Jay? Thank you. All right. Next, I'm going to hand it over to Stacy to do some introductions.
Ready for me?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. That's Stacy Barnum, Parks and Recreation Director. As a staff person assigned to find the consultant and work with them on the city's capital facilities plan, we selected Rock Project Management Services, which I think most of you are familiar with. And they're also working on the Gateway Center project. They started this project in September last year, and it's culminated to where we are today to go over, I think there are just a few pages of a plan. And I appreciate all the work that Bernie and his team did on the capital facilities plan. And so tonight, he has a presentation of PowerPoint for, well, a a prezi presentation that he'll go over with all of you. And then there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions. The council president, Kochman, and myself spoke a little bit before the workshop about next steps. And so hopefully she'll touch on some of the things we discussed so that this plan does not end up on a shelf collecting dust and isn't used. We want you to use this. Turn it over to Bernie.
Stacy, good evening, council members. I'm going to share my screen. I don't know if you need to look at my face, but I will turn on my screen. Okay. So thank you for having me tonight. This has been a culmination of a lot of hard work by a team, multi-discipline, a team of project managers, construction managers, architects, and engineers that understand built buildings and all of the goodness that it takes to keep a facility running. So tonight, I'm going to go through this, if you can see it over here. This is the, this is the actual plan. So I'm not going to go through every page tonight. I'm going to give an overview. That's why I have this PowerPoint or this presentation. And so a lot of it I'm going to go through, but I'm going to keep it open. If there's something that you want to see about a particular building and the condition of it and some of our recommendations. So with that, I'll explain it. This is like peeling an onion. This presentation, you'll get to know more about your facilities. There's over 40 facilities that we evaluated as a condition. And we use that as the basis for then putting together a preventative maintenance plan, which consists of a schedule and a budget for each of the facilities, including parks. And then with that, we were able to create a longer-term capital project program, which consists of, it's a six-year plan. And each year, it's got a list of projects for each year, but it goes out for six years. So you'll see that a little bit as we go through presentations. So feel free to ask questions along the way. I'm happy to take questions at any time. I do have an area towards the end where we can open it up more. I think you'll learn more as I get into it further. I know it's hard to see. Also, I have a handout there of the front end of this big book and the back end of the book and the capital, six-year capital quarter plan as we see. So the introduction, Rock Project Management Services. Our scope for work was to assess the current physical conditions of the city, all in public facilities. Then we prepared a narrative of the findings for each of the individual facilities. And then we provided, recommended preventative maintenance schedules and preventative maintenance budgets. So once we put together what needed to be maintained, how much is it going to cost to properly maintain those. And then from there, the next level was to provide a six-year capital plan over the course of six years. What is it, your annual plan each year going out six years? And it's meant to be a tool to be used for planning capital expenses. We prioritized the best we could with the information we had available to us, try to do it on an objective basis without politics, without other influences, based on the condition of the actual facilities and the needs and how the facilities are being used. And so that serves as a base point for you guys to make other decisions as you're looking at the list of projects. So the first step are deliverables, our assessments, checklist. So we go through and create a checklist, building system by building system, building equipment, building components within the different facilities. And that's, that is the checklist that we do. So we did that for all of the individual facilities that are publicly owned by the city and then also their associated properties that they sit on. And then in addition to that, we had the city parks also and then the public works facility. So when we say public works, we don't mean all of the streets and sidewalks and things like that. If it's associated with the building, we did, but it is the actual properties. Additionally, the city requested that we evaluate the feasibility of the properties identified for future development, such as the fire stations. I think there was a study session on that previously. Police station and the courts and the jail, gun range site, museum site, and a future RV park. So based on the assessment, the team developed recommendations for the maintenance, repairs, and capital improvements to meet the current needs for future, longer-term needs of the city. So that's, that's the city limits. And we've explored the bulk of the city now. So we feel like we're very familiar with your infrastructure and it's been quite an experience. And by the way, if I don't have a chance to say it later, the employees that work for the city are wonderful, wonderful people. They are indeed your biggest asset. And so we enjoyed getting to know them and they took the time to show us around the facilities and show us the good, the bad, and ugly. And they were wonderful, wonderful people. So your greatest asset there for sure. So these are the facilities that we looked at. And we broke them up into four groups. So public safety facilities is the fire stations, fire station one and two. Fire station two is in South Aberdeen. Fire station one is the fire station headquarters also. The police is right here, you know, adjacent here, attached to police port and jail. And then there's a smaller building down by the public workshops, the animal control facility. Parks, there are, I think, 16 of those that we reviewed. And they're distributed pretty much all over the place there. As you can see, wonderful parks. Some of them are aging. Some of them are wonderful. They're all great experiences. Properly maintained from the ground. Some of the facilities, like the public restrooms and things are showing their age for sure. Some of the fencing, some of the claywork and all that. The public facing facilities, such as City Hall, the library, future Gateway Center, and then the Salvation Army building that, the future museum are other sites that were more public facing than we also evaluated. So that's that category of facilities. The other is the public workshops. There's wonderful shops. You have electric shop, you have the transportation shop. There's a sign shop, which is really cool to go into. You see all the different signs. And on the water side, there is a water filtration building and industrial water intake, which I would say is like a remote park. It's just absolutely beautiful. If you ever get a chance, if you haven't seen these facilities and take a tour of them, I think you'll be amazed at the assets that the city owns. They're quite amazing. They're beautiful. Up in the watershed area, the water filtration facility is super, super fantastic. So within the facilities that we assessed, there's 14 different major facilities here that we looked at. When we looked at the buildings, we conditioned all of the different building systems. You can see a spreadsheet here shortly that goes through a checklist. We ranked them either very good, good, fair, poor, or very poor. And there's a whole range of the facilities that fall into the different categories. Very good is like new, no known defects, performing as intended, all the way down to very poor, major defects, failing to operate as intended, unsafe, unhealthy, and needs attention, immediate attention. The 14 facilities that we had, let's see. City Hall, the one that we're in here, the police jail court facility, it's in poor condition, which I can show you some photos of that. Fire stations, both of the fire stations are in poor condition. The public library is in fair condition. The museum and office facility, I know that you guys know that the Salvation Army building that, so a little bit of a port before it can be put into operation, it's in poor shape. The wastewater building, so when we talk about the wastewater plant, I know that there's a big capital program planned for the operations and upgrading the operations. But the actual buildings, there's a lab, there's an admin building, and then there's an adjacent staff break room. Those are the facilities. We looked at the actual buildings themselves there, and they're in really poor condition. Conversely, though, the industrial water facility way up down in the woods is in good shape. Water filtration facility, which is even further away, is very good. Really, really impressive. You're very fortunate to have some exceptionally good water because of these facilities. The city parks, there's a whole range of variation there from good, poor, per curvane. I think a lot of that, you know, that there's graffiti, there's needles in the park at times. So there's some danger there as far as, so that's the poor. But also poor because there's some slippery, when we were there, it was pretty muddy. Slipping hazard trying to go check out underneath the bridge there, which people do. There's also no word of park. Yeah, there's also no word of park, right? Real challenges there. Lake Aberdeen recreational area, which I think is funded through the water department, is probably a issue of mitigating to use water, is in very, very good shape. It's a beautiful park, a great asset for the residents here. And I won't go through all the, the police, gun range site, it's probably safe to fire a gun there, but it is unsafe because it is muddy. There's some old steps going up to it. There's no restrooms up there. So there's some real challenges there. And then the future sites, I won't get into those in too much detail. And then the future RV site, RV park is a great site potential for an RV park. So overall, there's 14 categories that we just talked about. There's 48 physical buildings, there's sites that we assessed. There's actually more if you count, you know, little pump houses, stuff that we checked out too. Overall, the public service administrative buildings are fair. Public safety buildings are poor. And I think that, I think everybody would agree, talking about the police and the fire stations, need some dramatic attention. And when it comes to public safety, we all know that public safety is the top priority. Getting the buildings up to par is going to be essential. The public works, the actual shops themselves are in pretty fair shape for a municipality of your size. They're, they're wonderful. And the employees, again, the employees, what they do with the resources that they have to make things happen are pretty phenomenal. They're great guys and women, and they do a great job of servicing the community. So the public workshops, there are, there's some money in the capital project budget, you'll see, but it's pretty minimal. They're doing great with what they have. Public works, facilities range from good to very good. Public works, the wastewater treatment facility itself is the lab and the admin space and the staff break room building is in poor shape. And then city parks range. So that's the project overview. So next, I'm going to go into the key findings. So key findings, each, each building we, the assessment includes, so that's what you would find if you went to any of the different sections that are listed there on the right. You'd see a property profile sheet. It's got all the statistics about the actual building, when it was constructed, what the size of the property, how it's a zone, whether it's in a wetland, you know, inundation zone, and some of the key property profile information. The next section, part of an assessment is the condition assessment checklist, where we rank each part piece by very good down to very poor. A narrative of findings, which includes a whole host of photos for every of the, every one of the different buildings. Preventative maintenance scheduled in, and then a preventative budget we prepare based on our assessments. And then the last section has that six-year capital plan that you have in front of you. And by the way, if there's, of all of these sections here, if there's anything you would want me to pull up, I can pull it up after this presentation, and we can go through it. If you wanted, if you wanted me to tell you about the library, for example, you'll see that the building skin of the library has got a lot of moss on it. There's water infiltration into the brick veneer behind it, and it's causing some fluorescence and some real issues there. So this is, I took just the City Hall, since we're in the City Hall as an example of, and I'm going to walk you through that, on how we assess these facilities. So this is the, this is the checklist that we use. So we have a basic information, when it was built, 1967. The overall summary here is listed, and we say it's in fair shape. Structurally, it's good. It is a very strong, sturdy building, like a brick house. Literally is a brick house, right? So structurally, it's, no signs of structural stresses, cracks. We walked through the building, we looked above the ceilings, and we looked at the infrastructure. So it's in pretty good shape there. Building enclosure systems, the brick is in pretty good shape. It needs a cleaning, but other than that, it's in pretty decent shape. The windows, some of them need replacement. They're just old, seals have broken on them. Interior work, on the other hand, is, is not so great. Mechanical systems, electrical systems are all dated, inefficient, and have seen better days. So this building's 55 years old. It's an old sign, and so it needs an upgrade of it. And so there's a lot to be done in here. It's nothing that's absolutely urgent, but there are certainly improvements that could be done, particularly since this is the headquarters for the administration of the city. To attract and retain some of the great people that you have, it's great to be able to provide good working spaces. So we go through each building system. This starts out with the outside of the building, and they're typically would fall into fair if, and then we would cite it one way or the other, poor to very poor, or good to very good. And we provide comments and observations on anything that is poor, or very poor, or good, or very good, or something that's worth noting. We go through the interior systems, we go through mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire, life safety. And so you can see on a lot of these, they're, they're poor, who will explain the reason why they are. For example, appliances, appliances are average age, but showing signs of wear and tear from continuous use. So as you can imagine, this facility is used all the time except for the pandemic. Maybe it's the only pandemic that got a break, but it's continuously used, year after year after year after year after year. So it takes a beating.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm noticing that the air quality was listed as poor in there. Could you go over that?
In, in here?
Yes.
Yeah, so actually, this ceiling looks good, but if you were to go to any of the other, you would look at the grills, registers, or diffusers. You would see that they're pretty dirty. And so it's a sign that there's a need for more maintenance budget. There's a need for needing filters, the ductwork's getting old. And so that's why we would identify it. So there's good signs that the mechanical system is pretty old. And so the chances that there's poor indoor air quality, I wouldn't say it's, it's not asbestos concerning or hazardous materials, but as far as good, fresh air, it certainly benefit from a new mechanical system. So that's the purpose of that. It does have operable windows, so that's a nice feature to have, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So we take the assessment report, and we actually do a narrative of findings where we talk about, provide a narrative behind different photos. So here, we're talking about plumbing mechanical systems, 35 years old. So that's just what we were just talking about. Floor tile, nine-by-nine vinyl composite tile, ECT like this, it would be suspect that it's asbestos containing. Good chance that it is. Most nine-by-nine tile before 1980 is asbestos containing material. It doesn't mean that it's a hazard right now. It's, unless we were to chew on it maybe, but it's not anything airborne or anything like that. But it is something that you would want to address in a longer-term basis. We go through each of the individual floors. On this particular project, we've got the floor plan. We talked about this floor. You see, there's a lot of congestion. It's just, you can see some of the ceiling tile here where there's condensate lines that are leaking over time and staining the ceiling tile. The lighting is not efficient lighting. Some of the amenities space for the employees are pretty dark and don't meet necessary the today's standards for workplaces. There's a lot of congestion in stored areas. You're doing the best you can with these, I think, in this particular case, on this photo here, if you can see it, we're pointing out, this is, the vault is called, and it's, you've got some storage that needs seismic restraint. Over here, here is, in the corner, is a comm data server. It's exposed unprotected. It should probably have its own room. It could get damaged easily. There's some issues here with the, there's an electrical panel hidden behind that casework panel door, probably doesn't read code. There's lots of little stuff like that throughout that we find. Second floor, similar situation, again, more asbestos containing tile concerns, congested dark areas, multi-using spaces. This is like a storage area back here that's become an office, you know. Again, the employees are phenomenal, making spaces work that weren't necessarily intended to be office-based. So that's that. This floor here, just so you can compare whether you agree or not, so this is a good chance for you to see for yourself this space here. We described what, how the space is being used. It's a little stark, a little sterile in appearance. Modest furnishings and upgrades could make a significant difference to improve the quality of the space experience for guests in the chamber. This is the executive chambers, the legislative chambers of the city and the executive with the mayor's office here, audience seating, things like that. We looked at aging stuff that, furnishings that could be improved on. Up on the roof above us, this is the roof here, if you can see it. It's got a short parapet right here, this parapet right here. So if you get a lot of standing water, the drain gets plugged and the water starts to overflow, this parapet one is not safe. It should be, you know, more, at least more than three feet. But the coping, you can get, if there's a foot of snow here, it can get underneath, and then once it gets underneath this cap, it gets into the inside of the building exterior. And so the concern there is what's happening with the library, which is likely very constructed, very similar. And, and then that causes the water to get inside the brick cavity system, causing that fluorescence and other issues.
Bernie, could you add scuppers to that parapet?
Yeah, there's probably, there probably are some. So the way it works, so like, here's, I don't know if you can see this, here's a drain here. Typically, they'll have a drain and overflow drains. There might be a drain here, and then there's another drain. So that's a little bit higher. So if, if one gets plugged, you have, it can only get plugged up so much before it would go down another drain. So that's typically how they handle that. That's how the, that's how the, the roof at the fire station is, fire station. Generally, this roof is in pretty good shape. It's an EPDM roof, it's a, which is a big rubber sheet, and then it's, so it's in pretty, it's pretty good shape. The problem with this type of roof is that if somebody comes up with a little nail or something, a tack in their shoe, you could easily puncture it. Once you, once the water goes through, it then travels wherever it needs to, underneath the membrane until it finds a crack in the structure, then it comes through. So when there's a crack right above you and leaking water, that's not necessarily where the water came through on the membrane. So that's the only, one of the bad things about this type of roof. But structurally, as far as the building enclosure system, the brick's in really good shape, it just needs a good cleaning. We do make some recommendations. There is a, the ESCO-type contract and energy savings contract could be utilized to improve the energy efficiency in the building. An ESCO contract would guarantee energy savings that offset the capital expenditures. And they'll actually guarantee that as part of the condition of their contract. So that's something to consider. The other is that to anticipate that there's always going to be movement of departments or changes in the sizing of the different departments or adjacencies that need to be changed. Somebody needs to be next to somebody for some particular operation and to have money set aside for some of those operational changes that happen on a year-to-year basis. You won't always know what's going to happen, but you do know that there are going to be those situations that occur and to have the money available to be able to do that so that you have also efficient operations there. Let's see. I think that's it for that section. So, okay. So then after the, after the narrative of findings and the checklist, we are then, we then prepare a preventative maintenance schedule. So this is the preventative maintenance schedule, again, taking the City Hall. We will look at inspecting, cleaning, maintaining, and repairing, and is it needed on a weekly, monthly, quarterly, or annual basis? So this is the preventative maintenance schedule. Again, we go through the line items here, and we'll rank it, what needs to be done on a weekly basis, or should be done on a weekly basis, monthly, quarterly, and annually. So for example, curbs, we're saying there's nothing you really need to do on curbs. On site lighting, you should expect that on a monthly basis, maybe clean and maintain on a quarterly basis, and you should expect that there's some sort of repairs that are needed on the site lighting on an annual basis. So a nighttime review for bulk replacement, cleaning, and repair, and adjust as needed for coverage. So that's an example of how we would look at these to prepare an overall preventative maintenance schedule. And that's something that can be used by, I'm sorry, that's something that can be used by the maintenance crews that plan their work and the staffing levels that they need. And kind of use it as a tickler for what needs to be done. So we go through all the different systems. The next step is to then take that and convert it to a budget, an operating budget. And so this is what we do, same, same exact thing, same exact items. We don't price up every single thing to actually walk by and look to see if there's any bulks. Won't necessarily need to, you know, put a budget together for that. It's absorbed in the overall numbers. But if there's something that stands out, we'll put a number to it, expecting that overall the costs are there. So landscaping, for example, we have 26 weeks at a couple hundred dollars. For 26 weeks, half the year, adds up to $5,200 as pruning, putting in some fresh flowers out there in the planter boxes and maybe a mow strip or something like that, and it's cleanup. So that's, that adds up to 5,200 bucks. You work your way through all of this. And I think on this particular building, the estimated maintenance and repair costs are 39,000, or 3,900. And then what do we, that's our estimate. What we recommend that you carry for a budget is basically the same exact, you know, if there's a lot of unknown, maybe we want you to carry a little bit bigger budget. there's a lot of unknown, maybe we want you to carry a little bit bigger budget.
Bernie, where are you getting your numbers from for maintenance?
Um, so, very good question, thank you. We, there are numbers. We did, we did the estimate. We tried to do the best, sound, reasonable, practical number. And so we do have some historical knowledge. We are doing this for a utility district right now of Inland Wood. And we also did this for the Port of Everett for all of their facilities. So those are some of the similar numbers. But we don't do it in vacuum. We try to put some reasonableness to it also. So I think we know your janitorial costs, we've seen those. We already looked at the different vendors and we select one. So that's, it's a combination.
And then I noticed you didn't put a figure on the sidewalk repair where the plaza area and sidewalk is in pretty bad shape at City Hall.
Right, yeah. So there is in the public works group, separate from the facilities, that they do have a decent size budget for sidewalks. And so that is in there. I can show you that. If you look below the red line or, you know, on your, it would be on the last page, you'd see, I think there's the sidewalks, it's part of the chip.
Okay.
Maybe break them over to that if it's online. So I didn't want to go through just one project, one site without mentioning some of the others. I can find hundreds and hundreds of photos that showcase how wonderful the buildings are. But I thought more important is since this is sort of the basis of what sort of budget is needed and what sort of priorities are needed, I wanted to talk about some of the challenges that we saw. So this is no reflection on the staff that's maintaining the facilities or, or anybody to that manner. It's just, it is what it is, right? So on the fire stations, this is an example right here, if you can see it, of what happens when you have a flood. You get a lot of ponding and moss growing up and the water isn't moving. Eventually it's going to find its way through and it did. This is actually the fire, the main fire station, fire station number one. And you'd see a bucket underneath where it's catching the water. Also in the main fire station, this is their PPE. This is the altered gear that they hang up. You can see the fire truck in the background. It's a little fuzzy, but it's all open. There's no negative pressure. So one of the biggest health risks to firefighters these days over time is the toxicity of the PPE or the, reading in the fumes from fires and things like that. So really important that these spaces be constructed. This should have a negative pressure. So there's, it's pulling the air out instead of, you know, pushing it around. And it should be isolated from where their, their day quarters are. This here is where they store their, their batteries and, and their radios. You can see some pretty limited space there. It should have its own dedicated space. The police in court, this is a close up shot and I wish it was better, but it's really on the backside over there. This is the, where the finished grade should be for the pavement and it's actually down here. And so this is probably a three or four inches. It's just, the site itself is sinking away. The building is there. It's got its own issues, but that's just a remarkable condition that's there. The chief is here, he could probably, he probably is familiar with all of this. This is some of their spaces. You can see it's trying to accomplish a lot in a, in a very tight space. Some housekeeping items, just limited space. So a lot of accumulation of stuff over the many, many years. That means some help there. Going to parks. Beautiful parks, by the way. No education on park management, but could use some more money. Here's a big tree.
Could use some more money, that I heard.
Yeah, right. So this is, this is, I think this is Stewart Park. And it's a really pretty cool gazebo space, barbecue space. And it's got a really nice fireplace in it. You can see the concrete slab is going up here from this tree. That didn't happen overnight and lots of graffiti and stuff. So it would be nice to boost that up. It really is a wonderful space. I'm going to donate my spare tire to this cause. This could use, the tire suite could use a new tire.
It's gone.
Okay, good. This is the Kurt Cobain site here that's got a trail that has become a little bit of a river right now. We were there on a rainy day. It's just routine stuff that has to happen. This is along the waterway, this is Morrison. And you can see, if you can see, a lot of tripping hazards with the, with the pavement there. Some of the restrooms need some tender loving care. This is at, at San Ben, I believe, this year. So this is the restroom and having to order with the, with the blue rooms instead. On the public works side, this is the public workshop, I believe. This is outside of the electric, the electric shop. It's just, you can see that they're getting, they're aging there. They're still serving their purpose, but they could use some help there. In a wastewater facility, this is where they, this is their, this is their lab where they test the water. This actually looks like a pretty decent casework, it's steel, but it's all, from all of the chemicals, it's all rusted out and they're just corroded and it's, it needs a decent improvements. This is their view out the window. I don't know that it was raining. This is the, the seal is broken, so it's really unfortunate. This is the gun range site. It's, again, it's, it's safe, but it's, it just needs some help. It's out there in a remote area and just, it needs an upgrade for sure. So again, doing a lot with some very aging infrastructure, aging facilities. So those are the key findings. Want to go into the CIP plan now. So the capital improvement work plan, what you have in front of you, the six year annual CIP work plan prioritized and levelized, that's real fit. So what is it? It's a six year CIP capital improvement program is a work plan of potential projects the city should consider on an annual basis for planning, design and constructing. How is it used? It's a tool for the city. It's a management tool to be utilized for the planning and prioritizing projects for near term on an annual basis for one to six years and then updated and reprioritized annually, always forecasting for the future CIP for the next six years. So you're always upgrading. What doesn't happen in one particular year, for whatever reason, the grants didn't come through or some funding didn't happen or there was competing priorities, something happened, that didn't happen, you can move that to the next year. But at least it's a tool you can use for planning. You're never going to do it exactly the way it is. It's not intended to be, intended to be a working tool. So on the first page, there's a summary and this, the following two pages after this first page provides a lot more breakdown to these five categories of projects. So the first one is a facilities plan, you know, so there's a project for all of the capital projects. So some of the planning, like what needs to be done immediately because we discovered something that's unsafe or should be addressed on almost at the emergency basis or a very top priority, but not a big ticket item. Maybe it's a broken handrail and something that can be capitalized, not necessarily a maintenance. Then there's deferred maintenance capital projects. So there's an abundance of deferred work over time to where it's not just providing more maintenance, it's to the point where you need to do a capital program to catch up with all of the deferred maintenance. And so that's what that funding is for. There's long-term property purchases you might want to consider for longer term planning. So that's part of that category. And then there is a security program, always thinking about security and thinking about emergency operations. So planning into the future for the what ifs. So that's that category of projects. Facilities, and I'm going to show you more about how we work up the numbers in a bit. The facilities and related infrastructure preservation, this gets into actual projects. So preserving and enhancing the actual facilities, interior systems improvements, building shell improvements, being say brickwork, windows, roofs, special facilities, infrastructure and site related improvements. So those are special projects that might come along, like we need to do a new fire station, we need to do new police station, those are items. And then a breakaway from that is looking at the actual parks. It may not be a facility, but it's got facilities on it and it's something that needs to be addressed. It's not part of the transportation program. It's not part of the utility program. So it falls under this category. The next is energy conservation. So once you get all those done, there's also this idea that we need to have efficient buildings. And so you want to look at them from an energy efficiency upgrade, you look at mechanical electrical plumbing systems. Other opportunities for improved lighting for deficiencies, electrical vehicle charging stations. By the way, Public Works has some money in their, in their tip also, I believe, for that. There's photovoltaic installation projects also that are emerging now. And then emergency generator backup power systems. So if you lose power, what do you do? Do you have the backup power systems in place? Category number four of projects are program operational changes. How are you using your buildings and do we need to make adjustments so your buildings can operate more effectively for the uses that are happening inside the buildings? So that could be new projects that need those, new city programs or modified programs over time. Projects that are related to operational needs within the actual programs. Maybe you need more workstations and items like that, which would be then tenant improvement projects in interior, just to be configuring the spaces. In this case, maybe you need to have increased space because of COVID in site here. And then a catchall for all facility management teams is to have a bucket of money for move add changes. There's always going to be employees that are moving from one space to another. You're adding some, there might be some that are retiring. You're reconfiguring things, you're changing up your, the, your FTE count, maybe from one department to another. So there's always people moving about that you need to be able to budget for. And then the last category is public works, facilities and infrastructure, you know, transportation and utility infrastructure improvements. So these are, it all says NA because it's not in our contract, but we did try to include all of those numbers so you guys can see the overall capital improvement. So it's not that facilities happen in a vacuum, that there's also public works that happen. And I wanted to be sensitive to that, even though that's not part of our scope. I was able to pull together, I think, the bulk of what Rick would say is are his projects he's got on his radar. And that should total up to a number here that's as big or actually is a little bit bigger than the facilities in its entirety, for sure.
Bernie, question for you.
Yes.
Do these figures include a third party performing the activities or city staff?
Yeah, yeah, generally it does. It would anticipate that third parties are doing this and that anything of size is going to be done. But that's not necessarily, it's like on parks, you know, if the maintenance crews can do that, that's great. If it's rebuilding a restroom building, then it's probably contracted out. But in any case, it should be comparable in that it is prevailing wage, your employees are paid prevailing wage and, or the union scale equivalent. And that would happen with a public works contract to public. So yes, it's kind of a mix, but that's a good question because there are some where we would expect that blue ad changes are being done by your crews and then facilities team. And then there's others where you obviously be contracted out. So in the next slide here, what, this is the first page of two pages that make up the overall bigger picture. And this goes down into the individual projects in more detail than the first sheet. The first sheet is categorized, categorizing those. So the first sheet shows the items, project, project types one and two of the five. So this is where I can explain a little bit more on how we, how we look at this or you're looking at this. You'll see, when you look at the numbers, you'll see that we have a planning and what year we're planning for that project, what year we would expect that it's being designed for, and then what year it's being start construction. So you can kind of get a feel for if we say in 2022, there's an immediate priority action items that need to happen. In this case, it's 2022 all the way across. That's not a good example. Let's say that there's some safety programs. Let's see, find something that makes sense. City Hall admin, we have planning in 2024. The design would happen in 2025 and construction would happen in 2025. If you were to go over, you would see that here's the cost for the design that would need to happen for three floors. And then the construction is 1.2 million and 1.2 million. To basically rebuild the inside here and bring it up to par for the long term, 1.2 million for three floors is $400,000 per floor. That would be for the mechanical electrical systems in all of the infrastructure. And the 1.2 million would be that for all the interior finishes and furnishings, for example. So on this spreadsheet, so that's what you see is for each of the individual projects, we list the year of the planning, the design and the construction. If it's listed as an annual, the idea is that it is an annual bucket of money that is used for that type of work. So a good example is roof replacements. So we know we have 40 plus roofs or 40 different buildings. And so if you have a 30 year roof on a building, you should be, you should be changing out a roof, you know, at least once a year. So you could prepare a roof replacement program. You know your mechanical work is, systems might have a 30 year lifespan. Your window systems have a certain lifespan. You can set that all up as an asset preservation, asset management program. So that's the idea behind the roof replacements is you would create that, you do the design of them and then you're, you're doing two roofs a year, average $100,000 a roof for that particular line item.
Bernie, did you provide all of this in like a spreadsheet format that could be pulled into an asset management program?
Yeah, really, that's a really, really good question. Yes, we did. And it can, it can easily be put into an asset management program and a facilities management program for the preventative maintenance schedule and then the preventative maintenance budget. So we use an online work order system. What's cool about that, I was going to talk about that, but I'll talk about it now, is that what it does is it takes all this information and puts it into potential work orders. So your facilities team would get this list. They would know what needs to be done this week from a maintenance standpoint, for each building, or what needs to be done this month and they can plan their work. It also allows, so it's a planning tool that they can use to properly maintain the assets. It can also be used for employees that say, hey, we've got a leaking, you know, a stained ceiling tile, we want someone to go check it out. They can put in a work order and it can be initiated by them online and then it's tracked so that you're actually tracking and maintaining your facilities to another level.
Is there somewhere in your report where you talk about the, that software and if it's compatible with our current systems?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys, I don't, I don't think you have a system yet right now, as far as I know. So, but no, I don't recommend an actual one. We can certainly do one. There's, recommend, there's several of them that are out there that are web based that anybody can have access to, so you don't have to, it's not a big expense. We did it for the Port of Everett and it's a, it's called JIX, F-I-I-X. You can look it up if you want. It's a great, great software for them. I only recommend it, you know, in one of the concluding statements. I'm going to go through this section in more detail, but so I want to talk about a little bit about parks. So the parks, based on all the condition assessments, they're not big numbers here, but we did spread them out so that there's not a big hit to anyone at any particular time. If you see some bigger numbers, it's because the, there's a gazebo or there's a picnic area or there's some, or the play equipment is looking a little rough. And so we identified those things that are capital improvements that should be done. So the, the third category here is energy conservation. We talked about that. And so there's some energy conservation upgrades, public building energy efficiency upgrades, there is parks, open space, lighting upgrades, EV charging station, PV installation, emergency generators, we talked about that. There's also the operational changes, we talked about that. You'll see that there's, those are annual budgets buckets to pull from, not knowing exactly what they are, but we know that there's a need for those dollars. So then we have this big red line, which is everything below is non-facility type of stuff. And so a lot of it is the tip, the transportation improvement plan or the one-off projects like the overpass rail. transportation improvement plan, or the one-off projects like the, the overpass rail project, the levee is in here, some Hawa'i 101 projects in there. There's lots of overlay projects in here. And I think that this matches with what, with what they got on their screen. Okay. Let me go back here. So on the front sheet now, what I'd like to do is talk about, you'll see that special facilities, infrastructure and site-related improvements. I think this is a good topic to talk about. If you look at the overall project, overall budget that we have, it's 301 million dollars over six years, which is a staggering number, I know. Of that 301, 188 of it is public works. So there's big projects. These are big one-time projects that you don't, you won't happen every day. So this is the big stuff, like the levee that's in there is, is part of that 188 million dollars. And, and all of the, you know, the, the North Levee, the, the rail overpass, big, big, big stuff, the water waste, the wastewater treatment facilities in there. And so that's a big number. Slightly lower than that number, 113,000, this number right here, if you look at it, is, is the number for, for all of the facilities over the six years. Even though that's a big number, it's a big number by anybody's measure. It is the equivalent of if you were to build a high school right now. We just built a high school for 120 million dollars. So all of these facilities, everything we've talked about, the 40 different buildings, all of the parks to improve everything that we're seeing right now, it's about 113 million dollars. It averages 18.9 million dollars per year. Of the 118, 108 million falls into the category of facilities and related infrastructure preservation. Of the, of that 108 of the 113, 102 million of it is specific facilities, infrastructure and site-related improvements. And so that's what I want to drill into a little bit more with you guys. So that is, that's all the stuff that's highlighted here. It includes eventually doing something with the city hall here and doing some improvements. This building's not going anywhere. It's, it's going to be around for at least another 50 years, right? It's not something that's easily demolished. It's structurally, it's sound, but the insights are seeing their age and there's some improvements that could get another 50 years out of it. So, so that is, that's pushed out the way since it totals at 2.6 million dollars. Something council member Ellis scrutinizing on numbers, which is good. You're good at that. I want to say, just as a preface to this, there is no design right now to any of these facilities, for the most part. Actually, that's not true. There's some numbers that we plugged in from other consultants for the police and also for the fire department. We validated those numbers. In fact, those same estimators work for us. So RC Cost Group and others. So we're familiar with them and we support their costs. They're, they're good cost. But a lot of them aren't aligned. And so we are putting a rough order of magnitude based on gross square feet cost for the size of the building and what systems would need to be upgraded. Was there a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we wanted to see a sheet like this that had additional columns for what monies have been found towards these projects and, and what the city's share of those projects will be. Is that something that would be in your report? Or is that something we talked to our finance director about?
Honestly, it would be both. To the extent that where the funds can come from, we identify those. You'll see in some of these, we put in notes and on the last page, we show the potential funding sources. So for the museum and office, for example, we say note two, if you go on the last page, you would see note number two identifies some funding. Fire station number one headquarters, note 10 for funding is, is a note. Gateway Center, see note number one for funding. But so, so that gets into that. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute. So I wanted to show these that are highlighted here in that what we looked at when we prioritized these projects, these major projects here, we looked at what the needs were first and then trying to be as objective as we could and not put any politics or spin on it or who wants what and, and all that, is that based on our analysis, objectively looking at the condition of the facilities and then also looking at what funds are currently available to, to pay for something. So for example, we would put the fire department and the, and the police department in high priority. It's public safety, always public safety comes first, right? But you would see that the library is actually happening sooner. Well, why is that? It doesn't mean that the library is more important. Some might argue it is, but, but we, we put it in higher priority because it has separate funding that is available. There's private funding available and it's ready to go. And so it's happening on its own path. So it's not necessarily that it's prioritized at a higher priority than another facility. So it's good to understand why are these buildings, these facilities happening. But if there are competing dollars, we do look at, at that and try to level it out over time. So it's not a big CIP impact all at once to, to the city or the residents and people that are having to pay for it. So I talked about the city hall happening, the police department. We have the planning starting in 2022. I know it's been planning before that. It's been ongoing. So I just put in this, this year. And then at some point, there's a design that needs to happen in 2023. And by 2025, it would be ready for construction. On the, for the police, I know that part of the cost would be to identify property. So what you have in here is some planning money, some design and purchasing property. And then you would go into the construction here. And then there would be some outfitting and, and equipment and other residual costs for a total of about 28 million dollars. Fire stations one and two are similar in that respect. The fire stations, you would start with some securing the properties. We, we did look at some properties that hopefully that there's city-owned properties. And so it's not as much of an impact from a dollar standpoint. And then there's construction for spread out over a couple of years. Again, so at one point about these dollars is these aren't encumbered contracts where you, you've encumbered it. And so therefore, it's a $50 million fire station. So you need to encumber it this year. That's what the contract value is. But so you wouldn't, but so this is not doing that. This is looking at the cash flow that would go out from the city. So when you would need to go do a construction draw from a, you know, from a bond or something like that. So that you wouldn't necessarily be taking all the money out at once, even though you would contract it all at once. On the fire stations, we prioritize fire station number one, meaning that's the, the headquarters, that that would happen first. It has more, it has more engine stations or bays and houses more people and, and serves a greater area. So it would make sense that that had the top priority, even though fire station number two is in desperate need. The, the fire truck is parking outside. You have a, something like a $750,000 fire truck parked outside in the weather because it doesn't fit indoors. So you definitely want to do something about that, that where it can fit. Yeah.
I was just looking at the, where it says note 10 for the fire station. And it says here that funding from RFA bonds, levy and RFA tax assumes bond passes in 2024 or 2025?
Right.
So if it doesn't pass, then?
Right. Well, so that, so, right. And again, nothing is guaranteed, right?
Right.
And we don't have a, the, the grand total, that where, where does all the money come from? The other part that what we don't have in here is we don't necessarily know all of the different taxing opportunities that you have, that more bonds that you might take out or loans that you might have, that you already have on the books and what the debt ratio is that you have, that, you know, what can you take out for levies, bonds, special, special revenues that are coming in from public works type of, type of projects and that are funding different things. So there's also a, I'm going to get to it later, but I'll just say that there's a lot of money right now, federal and state dollars, federal dollars, you know, like 1.2 trillion and more coming. And literally to where we're being told that they don't know what they're, how they're going to get the money out to everybody and where it's going to get distributed. So now is the time to have a big capital program. If there ever was, this is the time. I, I don't know if Norm is online, but he is going to join, this is Norm McLaughlin, who we're working with. And he is, he would be happy to talk about all of the different funding sources that are out there. So he would, he would be a, he would be a great person that could talk to a lot of the detail of what's out there and some of the things that, the progress that he's been making, just on the Gateway Center project, for example, that he's involved with us on.
Thank you.
So the public library, we talked about happening sooner. Hopefully it gets released this year for, to start some designs and some serious design and then construction. There are going to be some more dollars needed than just the interior improvements that are being funded separate. Building enclosure systems, the brick is in pretty bad shape. If you look at it, you'll see the white on it and the white dusting. That means that there's water that's coming out. That's the afflorescence. That's the salt from the brick. And so that means that there's a sign of water inside. The museum and old, what I'm saying is the office, the upper spaces, the old Salvation Army building, there's $350,000, I think you guys put to it, maybe it's the price of the, the purchase price. And then 1350 the following year, and then some additional costs to, for the upper floors, that trail out there. The public workshops, I talked about a little bit, they're actually in pretty good shape. They're at pretty small costs, but over time, towards the end of the six-year period, there's going to be some upgrades that are needed. I think I showed you some photos of that. The wastewater lab in the admin building and the staff buildings, this is in addition to the operational improvements that are needed for the wastewater treatment facility. This is the facilities where they test the water at the lab. And then also some of their office spaces are in pretty bad shape. In fact, it's located over a wet well, which is a no good thing to do. And so that's a, that's an improvement that's needed. The police gun range site needs some improvements. We're looking at that. RV park project is a revenue generator. That's why it's listed there a little bit earlier. In the first three years, the sooner that that RV park can get up and running, the sooner it's going to be generating a pretty decent revenue. The Gateway Center project is got separate funding that we're working on. In fact, I'm working on that under a separate contract with the city. And I can say that we, we're hoping to deliver some good news on some potential private funding that's coming that way. So we think that that project's on track. So those are the big projects on the facility side that I wanted to point out. The rest are pretty minor in comparison to those big ones. There's some big projects coming and that, but it doesn't mean that they're all necessarily competing against one another. They have different funding sources. And so that needs to be understood and comprehended. And it's a, it's a little bit more complex than we should build this before we build this, before we build this. If there's different non-competing funds that are coming from federal or state dollars or grants, those are things that we want to look at. And then there's some where it's just simply, you can't build a fire station until you have bond money or you have some money and it might take over the public. So those are outside of our scale, but are very, very important issues that need to be considered in all of this. Okay. So, so that's the plan. And I'm happy to talk about it in any level of details that you guys would want to talk about. Happy to do that. Conclusion is that the condition of the facilities do vary, with the majority of the facilities suffering from a lack of maintenance funding. And so that's the first order of business is that getting the maintenance funding up so that the good employees of the city can, can put the maintenance and repairs to the buildings that are needed is really important. And then there's the bigger picture, the longer-term capital investments, the six-year plan that's listed there. Most of the city's public facilities and park properties are subject to continuous use. So they're not like a, like a commercial building that maybe isn't used as much. They're really going through some rigorous, robust, you know, usage. The public's using them, the employees are using them as workspaces. But a more robust, regularly scheduled preventative maintenance, sufficient budgeting and then staffing to preserve the facility sites of, for the, for public, as public assets. And I think that that's probably the biggest. One of the key messages here is that the facilities are public assets. And so the more that they're preserved and, and operating efficiently, the better you're able to serve the public, the better you're able to hold on to your public employees and retain them and attract new ones. And then it's the face of, you know, this is the face of, of government right here. And so it's really important that the, the facilities receive the, the investment that they're needing. So yeah, it's for the public benefit, for public service requirements, attract and retain the employees and all that. So some suggested next steps. And if you will allow me, this, the six-year CIP is an annual capital projects planning tool. This is the beginning of that, to make informed decisions. And I'm happy to continue working along this and work through all of the numbers and the, the logic behind all of these numbers. But it's an opportunity to take this information and use it to make some informed decisions as you go along. And what should we do about this? Or what should we do about the museum, for example, or Gateway or other projects that are out there that, that you're looking at? What are the costs? When can we do it? What, what are the funding sources available for it? Can it be a standalone project? And if not, how do we prioritize it against others? So identifying the CIP funding needs first, against the available funding sources, I think, is the first thing. How much is it going to cost? And then, and then where do we need to find what funding sources are available? What is the gap? And how do we fill that gap? Establishing, the last one is talking to the web-based, the FIX system or a system like that, F-I-X, web-based facilities, preventative maintenance and repairs work order system for scheduling and budgeting and maintenance and repair services. And also being able to use as a staffing tool for predictable staffing needs to property maintain the facilities. So those would be some recommendations that we would, we would offer as next steps to be considered. And so I'm open for any questions. If you have any questions, you can ask all the tough questions you want to me ready for. I know I dumped a ton of stuff on you guys. So I'm happy to take on whatever you've got. And if you want to do a drill in on any of the particular sections, the different buildings that are there and talk about it in further detail, I'm happy to do that too.
Bernie, this is, oh, I'm sorry. This is Liz. Have the department heads all have a chance to look this over and give some feedback as to if the priorities that you're recommending are shared by them?
Well, we've talked, I have not talked to the police, but a lot of what we did is, is top priority, I think you agree, right? But we did, our, our team went through and met with, with mostly the department heads when we went through their facilities or their supervisors or others, whoever was in charge of the particular building. So for example, the, the water filtration facility, it didn't need much work, but if there was anything that was needed, the person that runs that facility had plenty to say. And so we went through and understood all of that. But we, we did do it intentionally, objective in that we wanted to, we wanted to put the numbers together as we saw it. And then it's injected to what, what people might say, well, we have money here for this to put. I think it's a pretty straightforward thing that we looked at. The one department head that we did not talk to was, was Public Works Department head, but I think we touched bases with everybody else.
Thank you. I think this is really helpful.
Thank you. Would you mind if I allow Norm to say something?
Yeah, I was actually going to say that you gave a big teaser about some federal funding and I was curious.
Well, yes, I'm here. And I've recently spoken with Stephen Dunk from the Department of Commerce. And he said that there's 250 million in federal funds that have yet, you know, been regulated to know exactly what purpose they would serve in the state. And there's 330 million in economic development money. And I know that there's And I know that there's other allocations that are going to the Department of Agriculture, which has community facility funding. And so I think now is the time for you to try and get some of these things because it may be, you know, just a one or two years that this, these monies will be available. But also, interest rates are low, although they're going up pretty quickly. And so it would be really good to look at your revenue streams to see if there's possibilities of using community facilities, loans or tax-exempt bonds for some of your different projects. But it would take a little bit of analysis. But I think that the gravy train is getting ready to leave the station this year, and you want to be able to get on it.
Were there any other questions from the council?
Yeah. And it's the same topic that I asked about here. I noticed that there was a price listed for cleaning or replacing the H back systems in City Hall. And I just wanted to double-check that that was only a thousand dollars.
No, it's substantially.
I was talking about just the filters.
Oh, yeah, you're probably looking at the, that's a maintenance budget. But there's also a capital budget to replace the entire system at some point in like two thousand and twenty-six or two thousand and twenty-seven, something like that.
For any council members that are joining today on Zoom, there are hard copies of a lot of this documentation that's here. So it'll be in your mailbox if you want to come pick it up.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Councilperson Shaw?
Yes, thank you. I don't really have any questions. Usually, we tell people when you're presenting to the council, you have thirty minutes max because we don't want to be wishing you were done. And I was riveted for the whole presentation, and I thank you for your thoroughness. And I think you hit it out of the ballpark. This is more than I ever thought we would see or get when we embarked on this journey. And I feel like we have a real working document. And I I like modeling it after a six-year street program because we're all familiar with that. We've got more on our street list than we know we can do. But every year, we readjust it and rejig it and figure out what can we do the next year? What what grants are out there? What spending is becoming available? And I feel like I'm just really, really encouraged that we're going to be able to start having a bigger, complete picture on managing our facilities. So thank you for your work.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We we do have, Stacy has, Director Barnum has a a link, Dropbox link to this entire book that has, you know, involved any of the different facilities that you want, any part, and you can see.
I think she sent it to us tonight.
Not seeing any council members jumping with questions. I think it's probably a good idea, opportunity to invite Mayor Shade to share his comments on the plan. Mayor Shade, joining us from Zoom land.
I don't, I don't really have much to say right at the moment. Just listening and taking it all in and like to look at some of the plans proposed more closely. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe we'll jump into council comment. And I'll start off with talking a little bit about next steps. Just like Director Barnes said, we had a little bit of discussion prior to the meeting and also over email kind of deciding, okay, we have this plan, but what does everyone want council to do with it? And so we talked about that a little bit. And obviously, as Bernie had said, it's not something that is set in stone. This isn't something that we have to adopt and follow by the letter of the law by any means. But it's certainly a good starting point to understand the current conditions of our facilities and what it might look like with both the maintenance plan and some long-term planning for capital improvements. Director Barnum and I talked about where we were looking before at different priorities for capital projects and that it might be a good idea for council to maybe maybe query the council and to find out the priorities and how that they, how they align with some of the stuff that was outlined by Rock Creek and Bernie and to provide that information back to the city so that they can perform some additional analysis to understand how how the two of those work together and then bring in their priorities as well. So I'll open it up to council to to comment on that or to build off of that as well on, you know, really our thoughts on next steps with this. Councilperson Russ?
Thank you. I just think that this idea of a maintenance program is extremely important. We have some pretty sad facilities, and I think a lot of that has to do with just deferred maintenance year after year after year after year. So I think we really need to address that as soon as we can and figure out a way to bolster those maintenance dollars so that we're taking care of what we do have.
Absolutely. Any comments?
Yeah, Director Barnum's approaching the podium here.
So one of the things that Council President Kochman and I spoke about was I could send out to the council a survey so that you could each rank the projects with your own priorities. And then I could take that information and collate it and put together the results of the survey at the council with the projects. The other thing that we discussed was the maintenance side. And in my opinion, the department heads have a good idea on when the maintenance side of the projects should be done and also when funding is available. So, for example, on that list is the tennis courts. And I had an opportunity right now with this biennium to apply for a grant that that specifically met the criteria to be eligible for funding. So I put a grant together and submitted that grant for that particular project. So I would think the same for public works. Rick and his staff are very familiar with the funding cycles for the different projects or maintenance that needs to be done and when those funds become available. But having the input from you as a council and your priorities helps myself and the other department heads to know if we have two projects that both meet the criteria for a grant that year. If we know that one ranks higher than the other by the council, then I know, okay, that's the project that I should be submitting the grant for. So those are a couple of the things that Council President and I had spoken about. So hopefully, those would be a couple of things that would be helpful to you guys.
We also had talked about maybe where this document should live. And we discussed that perhaps it should go over to Finance Committee to be a document that that they pull up and review perhaps throughout the year and utilize it during budget season and maybe before budget. Start to look at some of the the plans and make adjustments and and have it pre, almost preloaded into into budget items. So we're just looking for ways that it's not going to end up with dust on the shelf.
Katie, I was going to make that comment that there's definitely a role for the Finance Committee here. And I I don't want, I don't want there to be a popularity vote that's 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 propelling this plan forward into action. I want to make sure it's it that what we decide upon is consistent with our comprehensive plan and 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 the other, and the projects that we currently have programmed and and with funding earmarked. So, yes, I I think the Finance Committee has a big role to play here. And I would like to work with Director Barnum and and Director Soul on on taking this to the next step.
Any other questions or comments from council or the mayor, city staff?
This is Fran, Councilman Francie. I gotta just say it again, that I believe that we need to change out the filtration system, the filters on the filtration system so that's better air quality for us all in City Hall. Thank you.
Pausing to see if anyone is coming up with anything, and I'm looking around. But seeing seeing none, I think we've made our way through this workshop. And I got through the agenda. So is there anything else for the good of your tonight? All right, I think we're adjourned then.